Okay, we are at the six o'clock hour. Noah, is staff ready to begin?
We are ready to begin.
Okay.
Chair Savage, thank you.
Commissioners, are we okay to begin? Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for joining us this evening here in the chamber and also online or the telephone. And I'd like to call to order the Katati Planning Commission meeting for Monday, the sixth of November, two thousand twenty-three. And we'll start with the attendance roll call from Carla.
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Moffett.
Present.
Commissioner Berman.
Here.
Vice Chair Gelardi.
Here.
Chair Savage.
Here. Okay, the next item is for the approval of the minutes. Do we have any questions or a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call for the minute approval?
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Moffett.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gelardi.
Aye.
Chair Savage.
Aye. Thank you, Carla. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Chair Savage.
Okay. All right, now is the time where we have opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak about things that are not on the agenda tonight. So there's a three-minute limit. When we get to the three-minute limit, I'll raise my hand, and then we ask that any additional comments that you have would be sent to staff here at City Hall. So again, these will be time for comments that are for items that are not on the specific agenda this evening. So if anyone would like to come forward, now would be the time. Do we have any participants online, Carla?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Savage, that'll end public comment.
All right, if there's no comments, then we'll move to the matters at hand. And our first matter at hand is the senior mobile park overlay zone audits and the staff reports.
Okay, good evening, Chair Savage, members of the commission. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you, which will be up any moment. Can we do big screen? Is that possible? Thank you. It's easier for my eyes. Okay, so this item for your consideration is to make a recommendation to the city council to adopt an ordinance to create the senior mobile home park zoning overlay. Next slide, please. So I'll give you some background about this item. The city was approached in August by residents of the Countryside Mobile Park for assistance in maintaining the senior-only status of the park. Countryside has been operated for some years as a seniors-only mobile home park. It's located at four twenty-five West Sierra Avenue, so just up the road from us here, and the park consists of thirty-three mobile home units. We have been surveying the residents and found that mostly the residents are in their sixties, seventies, and eighties, so there's a range of ages sixty and up. Next slide, please. So in August of this year, the property owner of the Countryside Park held a meeting and consultation, and this is a step that is part of the state of California's mobile home residency law that is required to inform residents of the owner's intent to change park rules. In this case, the property owner notified, held that meeting, and notified the residents of their intent to change the park rules to convert the park from a senior-only park to an all-ages park. So Countryside has been operated as a self-identified senior mobile home park for quite a number of years under what's known as the senior exemption. So typically, the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits any kind of discrimination in housing based on familial status. One exception is the senior exemption, which allows the establishment of senior housing developments, senior mobile home parks, with the ability to restrict by age. That requirement, the senior exemption, is basically a minimum of eighty percent of the units needing to be occupied by at least one person who is age fifty-five or older. It can be more than that, but it's a minimum of eighty percent, and then a housing community can qualify for that senior exemption and can restrict occupants based on age. So Countryside's parks, park rules, have been actually that one hundred percent of the units be occupied by at least one person age fifty-five or older. So this meeting and consultation took place in August. Per the state code, the change in the park rules may take place six months later after that, that meeting. And so that would bring us to February twenty-fourth, where this conversion to an all-ages park could take place. So Countryside residents not want to have this happen. They're interested in preserving the senior-only status of their, their community, and so they came to the city to ask for assistance with this. Okay, next slide, please. So really, the, the residence chief concerns about conversion of the park to an all-ages park are really twofold. The first is loss of affordability and possible displacement of existing residents. The thought being that with conversion to an all-ages park, then the, essentially, the site rents could go up as people would be attracted to the park who might have multiple income earners in a household and thus be able to afford a higher rent than seniors who are more typically on fixed incomes. Then secondly, there is the question of change of character of the park. Many of the residents who moved there moved there because they believed it was a senior park and would remain as a senior park. And their, their expectation is to be able to live in the community that they've created among their, their neighbors and to have a peaceful, calm, quiet existence that might not occur in an all-ages park. So the city council is concerned about this and wants to respond to the residents' concern and do what the city can do to assist. So the council passed an urgency ordinance on September twelfth, which would, which placed a moratorium on the conversion of mobile home parks from senior to all-ages. They subsequently extended that moratorium on October twenty-fourth for a twenty-two-and-a-half-month period. That's an odd number. It's all related to the mobile home park law. Council further directed the staff to explore options to mechanisms to preserve the park's senior-only status. And staff have identified that the senior mobile home park overlay zone is the best strategy to address this issue. Next slide, please. So an overlay zone is a land use tool. It resides in the city's land use code. And essentially, what an overlay zone does is it provides guidance for development that is in addition to the primary or underlying zoning on a property. So it, it overlays the primary zoning. The primary zoning in this case of the Countryside property is neighborhood medium density. And so this would be on top of that. And as it turns out, Katati actually already has a mobile home park zoning overlay, which is designated as MHP on our zoning map. And what that overlay does, and it's on our three existing mobile home parks, which are Countryside, Sierra, and Ramble Creek, that overlay restricts the allowable land uses on those properties to mobile home park only, which means that there is actually no other use that can be allowed under the current, with that current overlay, without an amendment to zoning code, even other types of residential. So the mobile home, the fact that they are mobile home parks is preserved by this existing zoning overlay. That overlay does not relate to age in any way and age restrictions. It's simply the use of mobile home park. That's currently, but that is something that can be adjusted. Next slide, please. So just to see what this looks like graphically, if you, looking at this, this graphic up here, this is, this is our zoning map. This is an excerpt of our, the city's zoning map. And if you see, there's some cross-hatched properties. There's three of them, which are our mobile home parks. So the underlying zoning is that light orange. That's neighborhood medium density. And the, the striping, the striped overlay is the mobile home park overlay. And so you see that, that overlay is just those three properties that are our mobile home parks. So what we're proposing to do is to amend the MHP overlay, the mobile home park overlay, to add a senior-only element to, to the overlay zone. Okay, next slide, please. Which brings us to the senior mobile home park overlay zone. So this is a mechanism that at least twelve jurisdictions in California have adopted for the very same purpose that the city is currently considering this here in Katati. It prohibits conversion of mobile home parks that had been senior parks to non-senior or all-ages parks. And again, that's, that's based on this senior exemption carve-out from the Federal Fair Housing Act that at least eighty percent of the units must be occupied by at least one resident who's fifty-five or older. This mechanism has been legally tested. The city of Eucaypa, California, adopted a, an overlay just like this in two thousand nine to preserve their twenty-two mobile home parks that were senior only. They were sued and prevailed, and in, this is just over ten years ago, in two thousand twelve, the Ninth Circuit court upheld the, their overlay zone and found in favor of the city of Eucaypa. And that model of the senior mobile home park overlay zone has been used by all these other communities. Most recently, the city of Petaluma adopted this very same type of overlay just last month to preserve its senior parks. So our, our proposed overlay zone is modeled after the city of Eucaypa ordinance for the overlay zone. Next slide, please. And at this point, because we only have one senior-only mobile home park in the city, that is the property that this overlay zone will apply to if the ordinance is approved. It could be applied to any future senior mobile home park that is created that would, that could be placed underneath this, this overlay zone as well. So what is proposed in the ordinance is that one hundred percent of the units have at least one occupant who's fifty-five or older. This is following the tested legal model that has as its floor or minimum this eighty percent target. It reflects the existing park rules as, as a self-identified senior park. Now, there is, and there is actually another senior exemption, which is one hundred percent occupancy at sixty-two or older. However, that doesn't actually reflect the current park rules. It would set a higher standard and therefore is not necessarily the best approach for the city in terms of maintaining the status quo at the park. It also, going with the fifty-five rather than the sixty-two age limit, allows more flexibility for the property owner in renting the units moving forward. Some important aspects of the, the proposed ordinance to keep in mind is that the current residents who, who occupy the units, who might actually not meet the, that age requirement, they will, they would not be displaced by the passage of this ordinance. Essentially, they would remain in place, and at such time as the unit that they occupy becomes, they move out, that unit becomes available, then it would need to be occupied by a household with at least one person who's fifty-five or older. In addition, the age restriction applies to the, the occupants of the unit, not the actual owners. So the, the party that, that actually rents the mobile home space from the park owner or actually owns the mobile home, they can be any age. If they're not occupying the unit, the main thing is that the, the occupants of the unit meet the age requirements. The property owner of the park will be required to conduct an annual age verification to make sure that the, the age limit is being, is being met and submit paperwork to the city, essentially certifying that, that they're in compliance with, with our code, that that one hundred percent of the units are occupied by at least one person fifty-five or older. We have done community outreach on this proposal. In addition to residents coming and approaching the city and speaking at city council meetings, we had a community meeting with residents of Countryside on October seventeenth, and then also canvassed the park in person on the twenty-fourth of October, just gauging support for this, this ordinance, making this change to the code to preserve the park. That's been pretty overwhelming, the support for that, and also just checking the ages, just to make sure that, you know, that what is proposed by the ordinance reflects the reality on the ground in the park. And that's definitely been the case. There's just a few units that we haven't been able to actually talk to anybody for units, but otherwise, you know, overwhelmingly, it is a senior, senior park and would meet the definition for this ordinance. Next slide, please. Just a couple of other interesting pieces of information about this, about this park. They're not actually subject to the ordinance per se. But the property where Countryside is located actually has thirty-six housing units on it. Thirty-three of them are the park and have traditionally been the park. There are three that are separate. They're actually physically separate and have not been rented as senior units, and those will not be subject to the age restriction of the overlay. Right now, one of them is vacant. It's actually a house, not a mobile home, and then the other is a mobile home duplex, which fronts right onto Sierra, and we're pretty sure those are family units. And so the owner of the property actually rents those out directly to tenants, so those will not be included. In addition, I mentioned that the primary zoning of the property is neighborhood medium density. That allows for a range of eight to ten dwelling units to the acre based on the property size. The current density is seven point six units to the acre. So there is opportunity, potentially, for additional units to be, up to eleven additional units to be placed on the property. That is if all of the other development standards that are associated with neighborhood medium density can be met.
Would those need to be senior units or could they be non-senior units?
They would need to be senior units, yeah. And so that would include setbacks, you know, and, and site coverage and other standards that would need to be met. But theoretically, it is possible, and so additional senior units could be, could be added to the property. We are targeting a city council meeting for the introduction of this ordinance of November twenty-eighth. And as standard practice with an ordinance, there's a first reading. Two weeks later, there's typically a second reading, and then the ordinance goes into effect thirty days following the second reading if the council approves the ordinance. That would bring us into January, which gives us enough time for this ordinance to become effective before the time at which the, the conversion of the park would occur for the, the six-month timeline that the owner has introduced. With that, we have a recommendation to you. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance establishing the senior mobile home park overlay zone and amend the zoning map to designate the property at four twenty-five West Sierra Avenue as mobile home park senior. With that, I'm available to answer your questions.
Thank you. Autumn, Commissioners, do you have some questions?
Well, first of all, Autumn, thank you for all the background information. It was really refreshing to see that we're not going out on our own doing this, that we're modeling after successful ordinances at other communities. I think it's important that, you know, with housing, the way it is, that we protect our seniors, and this is definitely the right move.
Do you have any questions, Chair Amber?
In, in your presentation, you said most of the residents are sixties, seventies, eighties? And I wonder why we aren't requiring sixty-two and over.
So we have vetted this, this overlay zone pretty thoroughly with the, the city attorney, with our legal counsel. And their advice to us is that the best way forward is to preserve the status quo at the park. And so the park's rules have been that one hundred percent of the units be occupied by, at least one resident who's fifty-five or older. And so our feeling is that's the status quo. That's what we'd like to preserve moving forward in order to make sure that there's, there's legal integrity to, to this ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak. And there is a three-minute time limit, so when the three minutes are reached, I'll raise my hand, and any additional comments that you have can be sent to staff here at City Hall. So if anyone would like to come forward and speak, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time. Hello?
I just wanted to have a clarifying question from what was presented. I'm in the Sierra Mobile Home Parks, and as you know, I'm not of that age group of fifty-five yet. So I was trying to figure out if this overlay was just for Countryside or if it was for all three mobile home parks.
It's just for the Countryside park.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Donna Rose. I live at Countryside Mobile Home Park. I just want to thank you all and Autumn for your hard work and your dedication to helping us. You know, they have...
Oh, excuse me. Do you mind coming a little closer to the, the microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, they have nursery schools for little kids, and then they have kindergartens for other kids, and we all go through age. So it's just nice to hear that as you're older, hopefully, you can also be looked at with care and whatever, to live your life happily, and thank you so much.
I think it's important to remember that there are people who reside as a caregiver. It could be family. It can be outside help that reside to be there to support the elderly and that they need to, when they reside there, have the right to be there, especially if they're certified as caregivers. That's important to remember. They may not be of the age necessary to reside, but if they're there to support and live in, to be there twenty-four-seven, you know? Just wanted to make that something that you guys consider.
And Autumn, that is covered, correct?
Yeah, so the requirement is that just one person in the unit be fifty-five or older. So that allows for caregivers who are younger. In addition, the federal law actually has, you know, does have an exemption for caregivers in the units.
So you can limit the age of the caregiver?
No. No, we can't.
I, I, I misunderstood you there.
So the, the requirement of the federal law that's used to create senior-only housing, and what we are also proposing is that at least one person, just one person in the unit be at least fifty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Other people in the unit could be younger or older.
As a caregiver, though, like if it's...
Yeah, it wouldn't actually matter. Under our ordinance, it really wouldn't matter what their role was.
Okay.
However, there is also protection in the federal law for caregivers to be able to live in these senior housing communities.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a special, that's a special provision that's actually in the federal law for senior housing. Caregivers are okay at any age.
And do you need to get a specific qualification to qualify for that?
I don't know. That's, that's part of the federal law.
Yeah.
But in the case with Katati, with what we're proposing, as long as there's one senior who's at least fifty-five in each unit, then it's fine. And, you know, there can be other people younger residing in the...
Yeah, just wanted to have that addressed and clarification for that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brenda Woods, and I purchased a mobile home and moved it into Countryside in two thousand and two with the goal in mind of living out my golden or rusty... in 2002 with the goal in mind of living out my golden or rusty years there as a single woman, living on a fixed income. And for the most part, it was quite pleasurable being a resident there. However, recently, with the struggles of changes in ownership, various rules proposed and threats being made, a lot of my neighbors live in daily fear of either being evicted or, for some reason, not being able to continue their residency in the park. And I think, as a general rule, seniors don't venture out after dark. However, you can see by the turnout here that a lot of us have come out to show our support. And I personally want to thank you and the council for everything that you're doing to help us fight this battle so that peace of mind can be restored to us and the frustration levels can, you know, simmer down, and we can continue to live in this little park that we all really, really love. I love Cattati. I don't want to live anyplace else, and I hope that I can remain in my home. So thank you very much.
Carla, do we have any comments online?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. And Nick Uvaldi, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, I wanted to take a few seconds. My name is Nick Uvaldi. I am the managing member for Countryside Mobile Home Park in Cattati. And I wanted to reiterate statements that I have already made in the past, just reminding everybody that Countryside has followed the Mobile Home Residency Law and has already converted to an old-age park, following the state laws. And to say that any attempt at spot zoning to target this park will be seen as illegal action. And as I am sure you guys are aware, there is a 90-day challenge period to the current emergency ordinance, which is set to expire on approximately December 10. I am requesting that the city rescind its emergency ordinance very quickly and not pass a permanent ordinance unless it desires to litigate the issue. As I have stated before, this bell has already been rung. It cannot be unrung, and the ship has already sailed. So I want to remind everybody that, you know, this is not something that we are interested in litigating, but also we are open to litigating. So I have started to have some talks with residents, with the HOA president, as well as the city manager, which I'm also sure you guys are aware of. I would like to proceed forward, having those discussions, and not making any decisions here that are final, because we do believe that putting this ordinance in would be an illegal action. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional comments from the chamber before we move on? If not, commissioners, do we have any other comments or questions before we consider the resolution?
Autumn, can you address his December 10 deadline that he was talking about?
I'm not sure what he's referring to. There are many intricacies to mobile home law at the state level, and that is not a deadline that I'm familiar with. The, our understanding is that there is a six-month period following the meeting and consultation that occurred in August, and when that six months concludes, then the park may be converted. I'm not sure how that relates to the city's adoption of an urgency ordinance. My understanding is that that was initially adopted for a 45-day period against per state law, and that before that time elapsed, the city council then renewed that urgency ordinance for 22 and a half months. I will say that this is not new information that Mr. Uvaldi is sharing with us, that for our city attorneys have examined the issue, and they don't agree.
Thank you.
I'd like to appreciate everybody who came tonight. It's important that we're able to age with dignity. And I'm just appreciating the city, the residents, and cooler heads. Thank you.
I would like to move that the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone, establishing the Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone by amending Section 17.20.020... Should I read them all? 17.28.030 and 17.90.020 of Title 17 Land Use of the Cattati Municipal Code and amending the City of Cattati zoning map to designate the property located at 425 West Sierra Avenue, Cattati, Assessors Parcel Number 144340014, with the Senior Mobile Home Park MHPS overlay zone.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
And I'll third it.
Okay. Carla, can you do a roll call for us?
Commissioner Malkip?
Aye.
Commissioner Berman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Aye.
Chair Savage?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next matter at hand, the Santero Way Specific Plan. And I need to recuse myself from this topic, so I will be back, but Ed will take over from here for a while.
Okay, we're going to continue on right now with Item F2, the Santero Way Specific Plan Scoping Update.
Oh, wonderful Cattati residents. We're moving on. If you could take your conversations outside, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jalardi. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we will be presenting an update to the Santero Way Specific Plan, and specifically talking about the scoping process for that meeting, or that project. And we'll go to the next slide. So providing a brief agenda, we'll be doing introductions to the project team. We'll be providing a summary of the description, the schedule, and some highlights. Kind of go over a brief summary of what the SEQA process will be for this project, including what is scoping, identify how to submit some comments, discuss the planned community engagement plan, and then have time for questions and comments at the end. So we're going to the next slide. Just introducing myself, Noah House, Community Development Director. I'm going to be the lead staff for this project. So anybody in the community interested in commenting will be able to reach out to me. But we also, assisting us are working with consultants from Rincon, who are some excellent environmental consultants, primarily focused on work here in Northern California. And then also, we will be working with lead consultants, Fourleaf, who have significant land use expertise.
I don't want to say it loud, but I want to say it in the chat. Almost every single property that I had is because some Cattati has their son move in with them. It's complicated, and it's messy. So it's a bit like a conversation that I've had with them.
And that's why we passed the ordinance, what we did. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
You had an opportunity to speak, and you didn't. Okay, well, you had an opportunity to speak on the issue, and you didn't. And now we're moving on to the next thing, so...
Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't speak, because I didn't...
I'm sorry.
But I just think I wanted to mention that if they try to go below the 55, you're going to end up with an obnoxious sense of...
Thanks so much. Really appreciate it. So as I said, I'm Noah House, Community Development Director. We're working with Rincon consultants, and we have staff, Eileen from Rincon here, Eileen Mahoney. And then our lead for Fourleaf, who are the land use consultants, are Luke Windenbush and Jane Riley. Unfortunately, they are not able to attend. Jane is here via Zoom, and will be available for any questions after the presentation. And going to the next slide. So just to summarize the current location, Santero Way Plan was adopted in 2001, and it envisioned kind of a commercial office neighborhood down there next to the railroad tracks. And the concept scope of the plan is highlighted there in yellow. And Carla, if you advance the slides one more time, it'll highlight, so that's the boundary, the red line is the boundary of the current plan. It's about 25 acres. It's got a land use, and the general plan identifying it as specific plan and general, specific plan, I'm sorry. And then it's zoned specific plan, Santero Way. The additional four parcels highlighted in yellow are planned to expand the boundary right now, because it's essentially seen as an opportunity to meet some of the objectives of putting more housing and more businesses next to the train station. And those are currently zoned for low-density residential, so single-family housing. The properties to the southeast, and then the parcels, two parcels to the northeast of the Santero plan, or really just north, are zoned general commercial or commercial gravine steam corridor. We'll go to the next slide. So getting to the project description, the plan is to update the land use designations for mixed use, neighborhood-serving retail, community-serving uses, and transit-serving uses, also allowing for standalone residential. As I mentioned, it includes a potential expansion of the current 25-acre boundary by about four acres. It will create new residential and commercial standards for development in that site, including a minimum density of 25 units to the acre and a minimum floor area ratio of 1.0. And essentially, this will plan for about 300 additional housing units on the undeveloped or underdeveloped portions of that 29 about acres. Going to the next slide. As a part of this process, in order to understand all the potential impacts under SEQA and also what the needs will be for utilities, we have identified these folks as the actual utility providers for the neighborhood. And then the analysis will assume full build-out of that over a period of about eight to 15 years, with the plan build-out being completed in 2040. This is purely speculative, but it's important to have kind of an anticipated timeline when you're trying to evaluate the potential impacts of a project like the master plan. So going to the next slide. I just wanted to highlight some of the elements of the schedule. As we talked about, EIRs being prepared, and Eileen's going to get into that, but we're also concurrently working on community engagement. And then there's some really kind of key milestones as a part of that, both processes, really. So we're going to be forming what we call a technical advisory committee. So that's people that are involved in technical elements of serving this area. So we have a utility consultant, the person who does the modeling for the city's utilities, the sewer and water plan. They're going to be participating. SMART is going to be participating because they have a real vested interest in how the properties around their SMART station and their tracks develop. We're going to get the Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District involved, because obviously, they're going to be needing to respond to emergencies in that area. Part of the SMART site is actually owned by Sonoma County Transit, so they'll be a stakeholder and invited to the technical advisory committee. And then we'll have members from the city staff, police department, public works department, and community development, all participating in review of the concepts and proposals moved forward, to make sure that we highlight and identify any potential technical impacts or elements that need to be addressed as we get into the plan. Separately, we're also going to be creating what we're calling a community advisory committee. This is intended to be made up of residents, business owners, property owners, young people, as well as other stakeholders. And we're currently asking for people to apply for that. So if anybody's interested, we have applications here. They're also available online. We really just want to hear people's experiences with the plan area, how they use transit, how they interact with the plan. If they live in the neighborhood, we want to hear their concerns and what their goals might be as the plan moves forward, what types of uses get built, those types of things. And we're hoping to close that and have the applications all received by November 27. And then we will get going. For anybody who's thinking about it, it will only be three meetings, with the potential for a fourth, but it will not be, we're trying to make it to where it's not a significant amount of time commitment, so that way we get in there with concise presentations and we get your feedback. Really try to make your time valuable and appreciated, and not have to serve on a long-going commitment, such as a planning commissioner who volunteers for a four-year term. So highlighting a couple other things, we also plan to just do workshops and pop-up events. We were at the farmer's market early. We're going to try to actually be at the train station, using the depot building for allowing outreach, so people can just stock by as they're in the neighborhood, coming and going. We'll be doing some other canvassing events, so keep an eye out. Obviously, if you follow us on social media, or we have an interest list you can sign up for on the city's website. We have a Santero Way Specific webpage created, so please visit that if you're interested in some additional information. And then we're planning on wrapping up kind of the draft concept of the plan, at least the land use and circulation alternatives by early spring, and then trying to come up with a preferred alternative by late spring. And so the idea is to look at a few different options for how this plan could move forward, and then bring the Planning Commission and the community, one that we feel is preferred based on input that we received from both everyone here in this room and through all the outreach work we've done. And then ultimately, we're targeting summer 2024 for plan adoption. So with that, we'll go on to the SEQA process. And Eileen?
Hi, good evening. Thanks, Noah. As mentioned earlier, my name's Eileen Mahoney, and I'll be overseeing the environmental piece of this project. So the reason we're doing this analysis is because of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. SEQA was passed in 1970 and is at its core all about public disclosure and input. It requires that we analyze the environmental impacts of a project and take those into consideration before making a decision on a project. We do that through preparing environmental review documents, including environmental impact reports, or EIRs, which is what we're doing here. In addition to simply disclosing the anticipated environmental impacts, SEQA also requires that we seek to minimize, reduce, or avoid those impacts through what are called mitigation measures. We also prepare and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which typically takes the form of a detailed table of requirements and who is responsible for seeing them out. Next slide. This slide provides an overview of the SEQA review process for an EIR. The first step is the circulation of the notice of preparation, during which time the lead agency, in this case, the city, solicits input on the content of the draft EIR. The NOP for this project was published on October 28. The NOP for this project was published on October 23. We are currently on this initial step and the purpose of this meeting is to collect comments on the EIR content. Next, a draft EIR will be prepared and then published. During the 45 day draft EIR review period, comments on the adequacy of the EIR are solicited. Following completion of the draft EIR circulation period, a final EIR is prepared, including responses to comments on the draft errata noting any changes to the draft EIR and mitigation monitoring program. The final EIR is then published, at which time the responsible agencies will consider the final EIR. Finally, the lead agency makes a decision on the project. Next slide. We are here today to receive scoping comments. Scoping invites public input on the environmental analysis that will be conducted. Scoping comments can suggest topic areas to address, identify issues of concern, suggest potential alternatives to the project, and/or propose mitigation measures. If you would like to provide detailed comments, we encourage you to do so in writing. Next slide. SEQA requires an analysis of 20 separate issue areas, which are listed on this slide. All 20 of these areas will be addressed in the EIR. Next. Once the draft EIR is available, it will follow the structure shown here. There will be an introduction and an executive summary, which is a great place to look to get a snapshot of the issue areas, impacts, and mitigation measures required. There will be a detailed project description. And then the meat of the EIR will be the environmental impact analysis. For each of the issue areas on the previous slide, we will have a standalone chapter that includes a setting section laying out the physical environment and regulations relevant to that issue, an analysis of project impacts, and identification of mitigation measures where required. These sections will include many details not found in the executive summary. Another key section of the EIR is the Alternatives Chapter, which will include a required no project alternative and other build alternatives intended to reduce or eliminate significant effects of the project, while still achieving most of the objectives. Other SEQA required sections, such as significant irreversible effects and growth inducement, will also be covered. Next slide. So again, we're at the beginning of the EIR process and just embarking on the analysis. What we want from the public is input on the scope of the document. Again, if there's a key environmental issue you think should be considered or an alternative or mitigation measure you'd like to see included, please provide that information now. Comments are due on November 22. There are two ways to submit written comments, via snail mail or email to the addresses shown on this slide. The third option is to provide verbal comments today and we will take detailed notes and summarize all comments in the EIR. And I think I'm turning it back over to Noah for the final slides. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just really, we want to take this opportunity to dive into the community engagement plan. There's a draft that was attached to the staff report. It's attached to the agenda. But really just want to highlight this because it's a central piece of the update and the success of the update. The plan is intended to describe the framework we're using to foster collaboration, involvement, and consistent communication. We'd love to hear input from the commission and members of the public for here tonight. The team kind of proposed some pretty innovative approaches and founded it on the concept of embedded planning. What that really means is just allowing input anytime, anywhere, anyplace. And then also going to the people who are likely to be most interested in this and going to the neighborhood where the changes are proposed and letting people come to you as a part of their natural day to day. So that's really one of the key tools and tenets of the concept of the community engagement plan. And that's where we came up with the idea of opening an office at the depot, actually being in the neighborhood on a day to day basis and letting people come to us as they go back from home every day. So that is part of the plan and that will occur. So we look forward to hearing from people as we're down there in Santaro Way. The plan itself has a summary of goals, objectives, and strategies. And then outlines how we're going to ensure transparency and accountability throughout the process. And then quickly, we'll just go through some of the next phases for the strategy. So it's a little bit hard to see, but the first, yeah, so the first area is where we are now. And that's the initiation phase. And so right now, we're doing the SEQA scoping meeting. We're holding some pop up events. Like I said, we've already been at farmer's market. We've got a survey out right now. It's on the website, the city's website. And we've also sent it out to everyone who's kind of given interest in the project so far. And we're going to start canvassing. We're going to go door to door in the neighborhood as well in the coming weeks to just make sure everybody's aware of the project and has a chance to let us know what they think. After that, we're going to be moving to form a technical advisory committee, the community advisory committee. We're going to be holding a workshop with the commission and those folks, continuing pop up events and canvassing. That will go through December, the end of the year. And then starting in January, we'll really have some need of the project. Get some initial descriptions, some of the alternatives analyzed that Eileen mentioned to really sort of flesh out what's being considered and what's being proposed. We'll get those through another workshop with the technical advisory committee and the community advisory committees. Continue to do some pop up events and show people these plans and get their feedback. And then getting to April and May, it'll be the first, the public's review of the actual plan. So what it is we're thinking of doing, honing in on the preferred alternative before getting into the plan adoption process, which will occur through the summer, June through August, like. That'll be at public hearings. It'll be fully noticed. By that point, we will have identified the preferred alternative. We're kind of the best project that we think came out of all this input. And we'll be recommending something for the planning commission and ultimately the state council for adoption. So that's the summary of the process. The next slide just identifies that we're available for questions and we appreciate everybody participating. And I will just add, we received one comment over the weekend. And that was attached, our comments provided to the commission.
Really focused on parking and traffic as being some of the main concerns and also just the overall impacts of development. So with that, I'm available for any questions and would love to hear from members of the community. Questions?
First, just, I want to commend you on the amount of public engagement that you've been doing. I had a couple of questions about the community advisory board. I was very happy to see the inclusion of youth voice in that. And I wanted to know if you had a goal of a percentage of the community advisory board that would be comprised of young people and what efforts you're doing to specifically recruit them.
So we did not want to assign any percentages just because we actually didn't know who was going to apply and we know people have limited timeframes. So that being said, getting the perspective of all elements of the community, including youth, is critical. And so some of the things we've done, we've already presented and mentioned this to Sonoma State, their planning classes. We provided Kevin Fang, who's one of the professors at SSU, kind of lead in the planning department, provided him links to all of our information and asked him to share it with his students, both to get the student perspective, but also many of them use SMART and also some of the other infrastructure, the transit infrastructure, to get to and from Qatati, so we really wanted to hear from them. And then we're thinking that some of the embedded planning work is how we'll really be able to get in front of the students and let them know what we're doing just by being in the train station and at the Santaro neighborhood. If you go down there during certain times, it's really interesting to see the different demographics of come and go and age groups versus commuters, student commuters, kind of more traditional, you know, professional age commuters. And we're hoping to use that kind of the day to day coming and going to meet with people who are interested in this and then also leverage that to get engagement.
And are you looking at engaging high school students, like people under 18 as well?
We're very interested in having youth participate, youth being under 18. I don't know that we're going to go specifically to Rancho Qatati High School, but we're open to them participating and we will definitely get the word out to the folks that we know that engage with Qatati regularly.
I just want to thank you for specifically thinking about opening an office in the train station. That's brilliant. And I appreciate having that kind of visibility in the area. It's great. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I concur. Question I have as far as the Community Advisory Commission for people who want to participate, are they going to be able to do that via Zoom?
We haven't set the format yet, so we're happy to do whatever we can to kind of facilitate people participating. And if, once we kind of get the applicant pool reviewed, if people say they need Zoom or virtual participation, we can definitely make that happen.
I think it's the more community input, the better. And just for anyone that's here, if they would want to sign up, it's available online right now. So you can go up and you can just type your name in that you want to be involved in this and be considered for it. And I definitely encourage that. Anyone in the audience would like to address this topic?
Really quickly, I would say I have applications here in the room, if anybody's interested.
Neil?
Yes, good evening, Neil Hancock. Couple of questions, or one question and then one scoping sort of suggestion or proposal. First question is, in the history of this project, I'm just wondering, the proposals that were put forward, is there any sense of why they didn't go forward? There was a couple of proposals, certainly on the planning commission that I saw that went through and, but never got built out and stuff. The second point or scoping question is that we've got the train line and we have Ronan Park looking at its town center. And we also have Petaluma, who are doing, looking at their, around their train station area as well. So, you know, in a sort of pie in the sky view, is there any synergy in this? Or is there any way of kind of orientating towards that? So we're very interested, as was mentioned elsewhere, I guess, traffic and stuff. But so can that element of potential VMT, vehicle miles traveled reduction, be somehow brought into that plan? There's a potential there for people to use the trains and of course, walk in Qatati and get around. But that isn't always something that works for everybody's lifestyle. But what in the plan, in the scoping plan, could favor that approach would be a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Carla, do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Vice Chair Jelardi. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or if you're dialing in, dial star nine.
Callum Weeks, you have the floor.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jelardi, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Callum Weeks from Health, Striker, Generation Housing. Really love the direction that we're going in so far. This is looking really great. I think the community engagement plan is looking quite robust. I also second the comment about being really pleased to see the direct onsite engagement that will take place around the SMART train. I guess my only comment in terms of community engagement would be, it is the perception of some members of our community that when you invite them into a process and you ask them to apply, if they're not compensated, it can be perceived as being extractive and not necessarily even equitable to some extent. Or if there's concerns about potentially there being a more inequitable process because some people just quite frankly cannot afford to engage in these processes if they're not compensated properly, childcare, one of those things. I do think it's a wonderful idea to offer a virtual option. I would certainly support that. But just something to consider, if you can even offer a $50 to $100 site in, that might go a long way towards, you know, potentially ensuring there's better diversity in the final composition of the CAC. And then I really appreciate some of the comments that Mr. Hancock was making as well. And I know as a former planning commissioner, he has his experience here working with all of you. And I think there is potentially some synergies, especially as Ronan Park is building out. There could be a possibility that Santaro Way could be part of a master plan development or some sort of cross jurisdictional agreement that would ensure that we do have some level of success and we do achieve the housing that we need to support the families and keep people here. With that, I will end and just say thank you very much for everyone that has been working on this. I look forward to engaging more in the process and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Vice Chair Jelardi, looks like that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the commission?
Yeah, I thought Cal brought up a good point when he talked about childcare. And I know for me, a large barrier of participating in things is when I don't have childcare for my small child. And I wonder if that's a barrier for anyone that wants to be part of it and they express that, if the city could look into having a space for children, a safe space onsite at the same time as any meetings that are happening.
Yeah, we can definitely consider that. One of the, one of the elements of how this project came about is that we have a relatively large grant from ABAG MTC. And there is capacity in that grant, so we can look into options for trying to provide childcare or the compensation for participants. We'll look into both and see if we can make some of that happen.
Excellent idea. Any other comments?
Well, if we're going to give compensation, then why not have Oliver's gift cards or something to that effect that would benefit our community and the person? I mean, if that's what we're going to do.
And my only last comment I note was related to a letter from, in a, in a letter that we all received from Zen Blaney, is parking has always been an issue over there. And I know that state regulations sometimes tie our hands as to what we can request. And so hopefully, as this process moves forward, whoever will be coming in and developing that process will take that into heart, that those state regulations don't always work in small communities and that we have to really be, have a consciousness to the people that live in that area and the future people that are living in that area. And hopefully, part of that plan will include some type of small open space for the residents in that area. And seeing with that, we thank you, Noah, for your report.
Thank you. So yeah, in response to Mr. Hancock's question about why some of the approved development has not moved forward. So the most recent projects I'm aware of, there was a 74 unit multifamily housing project, mixed use, had some small commercial that actually included a fairly significant public benefit component. The project was to build out a city park, build a city parking lot, and address some of the parking issues further down Santaro Way as a condition of that project. The developer approached us and said that that just did not make economic feasibility. It basically couldn't pencil with all those additional requirements. We went through the project, worked with the developer to bump up the density to 98 units, trying to address that basically shortfall in the overall financial kind of model for the project. That entitlement is valid and out there and is for sale. And it's my understanding the owner of that project has been getting some interest, but they don't intend to build the project themselves. And so it's all about somebody else buying it and going in with them. And we have somebody who's expressed interest, but nobody's actually moved forward with building drawings yet. And with regards to any of the other projects, I'm not sure. I think kind of some of the economic uncertainty is really what's affected things.
Thank you. With that, Chair Savage, you can return to the room.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on to our next matter at hand, and that is an update on the active transportation bike and pedestrian plan.
Thank you, Chair Savage. My name is JP Harries. I'm a senior planner with the City of Qatati. And tonight's presentation is the second milestone presentation for the update to the active transportation plan. Just remember, when we say active transportation. Just remember, when we say active transportation, we're referring to bikes, pedestrians, scooters, whatever you see rolling down the sidewalks or the streets these days, so anything that has to do with active transportation, which means not being in a vehicle. Also as a reminder, we're coordinating our update of the Active Transportation Plan with SCTA, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, which is overseeing a countywide grant. Katati is one of the cities that is participating in this countywide effort, so there will be a larger countywide plan, of which Katati will have its own individual plan. So tonight, we're focused on the Katati aspect of that. We do have representatives from SCTA, the Consulting Group Fair and Peers, and Leschner Planning, and two of the things that we really want to kind of focus your attention to is as they go through the presentation, there'll be some background, but there are some proposed vision and goals. These vision and goals have kind of come out of the countywide comprehensive transportation plan, then they move down through the countywide Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And so we want to get feedback on the vision and goals from this body as well. There's a list of potential projects, so any feedback that you have on the potential projects is also something we'll be looking for. Realize that the potential projects that are being presented are primarily bicycle-related. There will be more coming in the way of pedestrian-focused projects as well. And then with that, I am going to turn it over to Eleanor Leschner, who will be providing the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you JP for the introduction. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Yeah, so I think we can just get into it. Let's move to the next slide. I wanted to provide just a little bit of high-level context. We presented some of this information, the background information, when we were here in June, but if there's anyone new in the audience, just an overview, as JP mentioned, we're working on updating that countywide plan, as well as local plans in these seven different jurisdictions that are on the slide, Katati being one of them. Over the summer, we've been working on establishing the foundation, understanding existing conditions, doing some of the technical analysis work. We've also begun the outreach, public outreach and engagement, and since Katati, the Katati Plan, since there was some previous work done over the past few years to update the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, now called the Active Transportation Plan, the Katati Plan is on an accelerated schedule, so we already are moving ahead with the development of draft projects, and then some of the future tasks that we'll be working on over the next couple of months, we'll be developing the actual draft plan itself, and then, you know, the final step is taking it for board review and approval. So, next slide. I wanted to reiterate something that I believe we shared in June, one of the big updates in my mind, as we update the 2014 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, is this concept of level of traffic stress and the desire to build bicycle and pedestrian networks that are comfortable for people of all ages and abilities. So, according to, you know, national research, about 60% of the general public could be categorized as being interested but concerned about bicycling, and this has really shifted how we think about planning for bicycle, as well as for pedestrian facilities, and how can we develop networks that are lower stress, that are more comfortable for a wider range of people? So, I'll kind of be touching on this throughout my presentation. Next slide. Some other aspects about the update, you know, thinking about lower stress facilities, the first bullet here, looking at different on-street bikeway options. One big change since the last Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan is that Caltrans has now adopted Class 4 Protected Bikeways as a new class, and I'll be showing some photos of that. So that's something we want to think about, where that might be appropriate in Katati in addition to paths. We'll also be looking at micro-mobility, how to accommodate electric bikes, e-scooters, different mobility devices that are more common now than they were 10 years ago, as well as a couple of other topics that are shown here. We can go to the next slide. So in terms of public outreach, we know that the city led several pop-up events, tabling events in 2021, and then there was also some engagement that occurred as part of the local roadway safety plan, the LRSP, over the past few years, which had a web map, similar to the web map that I'll show on the next slide. So SCTA published the project webpage for the countywide plan and all of these local plans that are under its umbrella in October, and I'll share a little bit more on that on the next slide. But some other activities I wanted to highlight is that the city staff was out at the Katati Farmers Markets a couple times in September, and then myself and JP had a tabling event at Oliver's Market last week as well, where we talked to between 15 and 20 people over the two or three hours that we were there. And so that's just a photo of, you know, the map that we had and the comments that we were receiving from people. Go to the next slide. So this is a screenshot from the web map as of last week, across the whole county, there were over 550 comments. This obviously is just zoomed in on Katati, so we have lots of different people engaging and adding comments. The orange is for bicycle, blue is for pedestrian, and pink pins are for accessibility. And then we've also overlaid this, there's like some smaller blue and orange dots, we've overlaid the comments that were received on a similar map as part of the local roadway safety plan, so we're able to look at, you know, all of those comments and start to understand, like what are the main themes and trends that people are noticing? Next slide. So this just summarizes at a really high level what we're hearing in the comments in terms of, you know, desire for more bike lanes, people specifically asking for protected facilities, starting to see those in other communities, you know, what, you know, can we have those separated facilities in Katati? Closing sidewalk gaps, improving crossings, adding new crossings in some locations. Let's see, there's kind of a lot of information here, but, you know, traffic calming, improvements to trails, both existing trails, and then maintaining existing trails, I should say, and then improving access and connections between the trails that exist today. Some of the roadways that are kind of called out are hotspots. Maybe you might expect some of the more major or minor arterials like 116, Old River Highway, Sierra Avenue, et cetera. And then in terms of destinations, people talking about wanting to have better bicycle and pedestrian access to the downtown, to the Smart Station, Oliver's Market Shopping Area, Ronert Park, Sonoma State, things like that. Next slide. So I have a couple of maps here, based on our existing conditions and technical analysis work, so this map here is showing the existing, existing bikeway network, which are the solid lines, and then that's on top of the dotted lines, which was what was proposed as part of the 2014 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And you'll see it's color-coded by type of bikeway, so we have Class 1 paths are light blue, Class 2 bike lanes in yellow, and then Class 3 bike routes in orange, and then separated bikeways in dark blue. Next slide. We're also taking into consideration the transit network, places that people may walk, obviously the Smart Station, as well as different bus routes and where the bus stops are, as shown here. Next slide. And then this map is getting into what I alluded to earlier in terms of how we're thinking about what we call level of traffic stress, or LTS for short, and so this is a calculation that we've done on the roadway network in Katati here, where we look at different roadway contextual factors, like number of lanes, speeds, what's the existing bikeway facility, to calculate a score from 1 to 4, how stressful or low-stress is the roadway for people biking. But it can also give, you know, a bit of a sense for people walking as well. And so this map here, you can see the light blue, and I guess light blue and dark blue are LTS score 1 and 2, which are the lower-stress areas, and so you'll see those are more residential streets, or streets with lower speed limits, like 25 miles per hour. And then streets that are in orange or yellow are what we call higher-stress roadways, unsurprisingly, the major and minor arterials. And so this helps us understand, like, where are there low-stress routes today, and then where are there gaps in the network that we really want to focus our improvements on, on the yellow and orange areas? There's another piece of data on this map, which is the yellow kind of highlighter, thicker band, also shows the high injury network that was developed as part of the SCTA Countywide Vision Zero Action Plan, so that looks at collisions, injuries and fatalities, and traffic collisions all across the county, and highlights where are the hotspots for safety and collision, based on historic collisions. So that's what you'll see in Redwood Highway here. So, next slide. I don't want to talk about this too much, but I did want to have a visual, if anyone had any questions, what's the difference between the different bikeway facilities? So I spoke a little bit about how Class 4, which is in the upper right corner, is a newer facility type, that's an option today. So these are bike lanes that have a physical separation from the vehicle lane, like you see in this example, where there's a, you know, quite wide curb between the bike lane and vehicles. And we can always come back to this if anyone has any questions. Next slide.
That would include not just the sidewalk, but even the pylons that you see?
Yes, it could be like a bollard, there are a couple of different options, but it's something like physical, whereas a buffered bike lane that I think you have on Sierra Ave, kind of right out front, maybe there's a wider painted buffer, but there's not like something physical. I think JP spoke to this, I just want to mention, we are also definitely looking at pedestrian facilities, sidewalk gaps, how to improve different crossings, some of the recommendations I'll go into tonight, we haven't quite finished the pedestrian side of the recommendations, but we will be back with more thoughts on that at a later meeting. So, next slide. So now I'm going to present a little bit about vision and goals. As JP mentioned, the project team, SCTA stakeholders, have developed a draft vision statement, as well as goals, for the countywide plan. And I'm going to let everyone just take a minute to read the vision statement, because it's a bit long, but my question to this group tonight is, you know, does the vision statement and do the goals resonate with Katati? Are there things that you like or don't like, or might want to refine for the Katati local plan, or is it something that you all would embrace? Just take a minute to read this.
I think if it would be appropriate to call out something about new development, because so much of our infrastructure is contingent on what developers are able to put into, you know, new streetscapes, new sidewalks, new intersection, those type of things, and I think, as I read through comments in the community, there is a question of, are we calling that out enough? Is that highly visible? So I don't know if it would be appropriate to make reference to that in this or not, but that would be my only comment.
Okay.
You want to hear from us now?
Sure, yeah, whatever.
Well, I want to be sure that we're speaking to people of limited mobility, wheelchairs, walkers, tricycles, maybe children, yeah, so, but particularly disabled and limited mobility.
Great. Okay, well, let's move on to the goals, and we can continue this discussion throughout or at the end, however you prefer. So then, similarly, there are some draft countywide goals and descriptions. The first goal is around having a connected and reliable active transportation network that allows people of all ages and abilities to use different types of transportation, easily, affordably, dependively. The second is around having a safe and well-maintained network, to create and sustain a high-quality and low-stress network that employs the Vision Zero and Safety Plan policies. And the third piece is around being community-oriented and place-based, to tailor projects to urban, suburban, rural communities, supporting a diversity of uses and users, and creating community through active transportation. Any quick thoughts on that, or we can circle back at the end? Okay, on we go, next slide. So now we're getting into the draft potential projects. You know, one thing I'll note is, we want to carry forward any proposed projects from 2014 that have not been completed yet, and this map here really focuses on either updates to the 2014 proposals, or, you know, new proposals that weren't yet included in the 2014 plan. So this is kind of an overview map, I have it presented a couple of different ways, so let's go to the next slide. This slide, I think, is helpful because it shows it with the same colors as the map I presented before, so it shows what we're at least initially thinking as potential projects by the different facility type. Next slide. And then here, we have that same key with the project numbers. Next slide, I might have to go back. And then I have a list of the 20 draft projects that were in the agenda packet as well, so maybe I'm looking for some feedback if we want to go through these one by one, or people specifically want to talk about them.
What's the process for these 20 items, they're proposed projects? So what would be, do they get then down to a lesser number and they move forward, or do all 20 of these move forward, or what's that process?
Yeah, great question. So let's go to just the next slide, which I think is my final slide on this. The purpose is, in the end, we would have an updated map like this, where we have, let's see, this right now, the dash lines are similar to the previous map, the dash lines are from the 2014 plan proposed, the new proposals are a bit thicker on this map, and so eventually we want to have, you know, a proposed vision for the long-term active transportation network for Katati. So I think we can, in my understanding, include, you know, as many projects as makes sense for the city, and in another step, we may identify like short-term versus long-term priorities, but at this stage, I think we want to get the full vision on the map, and the final product would be something like this, a more final version of this map.
So this will just, would basically include whatever those proposed projects are, there's not a process to whittle those down or prioritize them or anything like that, it's just they're all in the project plan?
Yes, I think there could be a prioritization effort in addition.
Right now, the idea is, those are the 20 major bike projects that we're looking at, bicycle projects that we're looking at right now, and they would all be included in the plan unless, of course, the Commission would say, look, we don't want that one in the plan, or wanted to add one that you're not seeing in the plan, or two, or whatever. Then we would identify, try to prioritize them in some way. If you go back and look at our 2014 plan, it kind of gets a little strange, because they were all high-prioritized, but I think we'll do a better effort at that, and actually, we got some feedback from Neil and Jenny, that actually did attempt to put some priority to them, which was terrific feedback. And then also, we'll try to identify kind of ballpark costs associated with each of those projects, which will help us to identify how to fund the projects as we go out for certain grants and things like that. So the idea right now is, this is the, basically, the big bicycle projects that we're looking at, that we think will help to achieve our goals.
And I would just add, it's okay to be asked...
And I would just add, it's okay to be aspirational here. This is, this is a long-term planning document trying to improve connectivity and circulation for people not driving for the long term. I mean, it'll be 10 years once we get this adopted from when the last one was done. And so anything that has the potential to improve access for alternative transportation, we want to hear about it now and get it on a list.
So JP, are we going to, you're going to be bringing back like a priority list to us in the future, once, in the next steps on these projects? And is that going to be based on, because I know we're looking at filling in gaps? And then we have areas of safety concerns. So how is that priority list going to be put together?
I would say it's going to be a combination of factors. So these projects are going to get built, sometimes city projects, but sometimes by private development. So some of these things that may be low priority, but a project comes in to develop a vacant parcel that has a project identified next to it, they're going to have to build that as a part of their project. So that low priority project might get bumped up in actual implementation just by the nature of development and how that occurs. Conversely, we may identify a very high priority project that then the city council agrees and puts it into the capital improvement program by the public works department and pushes that up in construction phasing. So that is not likely to be the ultimate goal of this process. We may have some prioritization component to this process, but it's going to be based on a number of factors. And ultimately, the city council will be involved in that because there's funding behind it.
One of my favorite words is aspirational. Is it beneficial to have any additional detail in these 20? Or are they meant to be more general and broad? Or?
I think, I mean, we'd welcome, yeah, additional.
Well, there's just a couple of things that Neil brought up in his comments to us that I think have been brought up before around. On number six on here, on the neighborhoods north of 116 behind Lowe's, and how that connectivity comes in with those new intersections down the road and everything. And is there more we can do to give the community a sense of that as a high priority without prioritizing? Or, I don't know. Is this, do you feel sufficient?
Yeah, the answer, I think that some of the comments we got were good. They were obviously, they didn't convey to the reader what we were after. And so those are, it was a good comment to say, hey, you know, let's define that better, which we will do. And then I think another comment along the same lines was, and tied to what Noah was saying, hey, this needs to be clear. So when a project comes in, the developer knows you're responsible for doing this particular project. So like the example was, we're going to have multiple crossings across 116. Well, some of those are more important than others, and we should be, and we should call them out as such. And I think we're going to do that so that there is no confusion like, oh, well, it says multiple, you can do that one down the street. I don't want to do it here.
Yeah.
So there's room for improvement, and that's why we're going through this process.
And I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Definitely. And then the only other one, I guess, and I don't know how many of these type of scenarios where, you know, Qatadi and Ronert Park, you know, the trail just changes towns. I understand we're using the same group to kind of put together. So are those areas identified where it's going to take some mutual design, like, I think, number two here on that bridge at Copeland Creek Trail? And those type of areas, are we calling out those areas that need collaboration specifically?
Yeah, that, number two, is specifically that. For us, it's really a Ronert Park project, the pedestrian bridge that's proposed, but we felt it was prudent to make sure it was in our plan because it is going to probably require coordination with Qatadi. And that project also hasn't been engineered yet. So where that landing on the, on the east side, on the Ronert Park side, is pretty clear about where it's going to be, and it's all going to be Ronert Park. But on the other side, you're really getting right into where we're sharing borders there. And so we don't know how it's going to happen, but we know that we want to be a part of that, and we want to support that project, that overcrossing is critical. So that's what number two is about. There's other areas where like, where LaSalle at East Qatadi, there's that kind of not, there's that access that goes into Ronert Park, but it's informal, you know, people just walking through the field now. We want to formalize that at excess. And then there's another element which people ask for explanation, where we feel like there's a large gap, you know, where you're on the trail, that there might be opportunities to link through to Ronert Park, and this is the one along in the Bruce Avenue area. We don't know. That one is where we want to be vague, because we don't know exactly where that is. But we know we want to try to get a connection in there, and the opportunity may present itself, and, you know, then we'll go for it.
And with the future growth on 116, one of my biggest concerns is the potential number of students that would be going over to Thomas Page and the need for a crossing in Madron. And I know that'd be working with Caltrans to get something like that done. But that's, now, I know when the development comes in, they're responsible for some stuff, but are they responsible for impacts like down the road? Because...
It's a couple, the answer is yes and no, but whether or not you can force them to go onto someone else's property and do something becomes, there has to be a nexus there that we can, that we can see. But there's no doubt that they're going to be bringing residents into the area. If you build, you know, 500 units out there, that's 1,000 people, and they're going to need to travel. So it does create a need for those. But whether or not you can make someone go down and do a project that they don't have any ability to control.
Right.
The answer is sometimes you can do that, sometimes you can't.
And I don't know if Noah wants to add anything to that, but...
JP's exactly right. And the only thing I would add is oftentimes there are development impact fees that are intended to address those kind of off-site needs. And then, but then it puts it on the city to build that project into a capital improvement process using those funds.
And the other thing I noticed reading through the plan, especially with the trails, the use of asphalt, I'd prefer we avoided using asphalt and use things like the decomposed granite in some of our trails that we have around here. I just think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I think that primarily came up because we noticed that we need, between East Qatadi and Commerce, that section there, it's asphalt now at that particular section. And we talked about like improving the asphalt. But I agree, there's always been in Qatadi a preference for more natural surfaces, like along the Laguna there. And we can certainly definitely look at that using our DG, or like what we have over here, circling a ranch there. This, isn't the intent of this plan to dictate the surface. I think that when that project came, you know, you'd look at that and find out what's appropriate in that particular area.
I think I had one, one last slide, just with schedule and next steps, and then we can Well, from memory, some of the next steps include working on the pedestrian, pedestrian side of the recommendation, so looking at sidewalk gaps, crossings, like we were discussing. City staff is also developing, oh, one slide before this one, policies and strategies. So there'd be the visions, the goals, and then more detailed policies and strategies. We're also making plans to have additional opportunities for community engagement this winter. And the project team is working on, you know, next step would be to work on developing the actual draft plan in addition to these other items. And, you know, city staff is interested in coming back to the Planning Commission in December with some updates. And then the target is to have the draft plan in quarter one, adopted by quarter one of next year. So it is an accelerated timeline, and we're looking forward to digging into the rest of the plan development. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to, I want to add one other thing before you go into questions and conversation. One of the comments you had raised earlier was to add something about new development. Once we look at the vision and then adopt the goals, the other, what you're probably going to bring, what I'm going to try to bring to you in December, early December, is objectives and policies that are based on those goals. And so you would definitely see, because I've already written it, an objective that talks about requiring new development to implement the projects that we identify in this plan. So it's not, that's not so much a goal, but it would help to achieve our goal of creating a connected and safe bicycle and pedestrian network. Likewise, what we can do is on the surfacing, we can add that to be an objective that we always promote the natural surfacing as opposed to asphalt. So you'll see, that kind of comment will come out, well, you'll be presented to it again, but it will come in the form of an objective or a policy.
Do you have comments or questions from the commission?
One additional. I recently returned from back east to see the beautiful fall colors. And driving around these small towns, one thing that really struck me was they have added reflective tape on the poles holding signs up. And I took a picture of it because at nighttime, seeing these crosswalks, it's 10 times more visible just by doing this little simple step right here. I really think that that's just, would be a really inexpensive way of providing more safety for our crosswalks. I just wanted to share that. It just, it was very impressive. I was just, I had to go back at nighttime to see it again, and then went back in the daytime. My nighttime picture didn't turn out so great, so I had to went back and took a photo of it during the day. Yeah, it was great.
Okay, now it's time for our public comment. If anyone has anything they would like to step to the podium, now is your time.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you very much. Surprise, surprise, I'm up here. Great to hear all the comments and, you know, questions that are coming out. Thank you. You know, we've been in Qatadi 25-plus years or so, and I mean, the first bicycle plan came out in 2008, was fantastic. You know, 2014, the update that came in, I think they were addressing all of the emergency stuff that needed, all the high priority things there. But there has been, you know, this walking around in this area for 10,000 years. You know, so how do we go back to, or how do we cultivate that ease of being able to get around? I mean, that's just, you know, to paint the bigger picture. And certainly from a British point of view, where I've done walking and been and living and stuff, it's a lot of work still to keep on remembering where it is that you can actually walk, and the value of it. It can be so much fun going out with friends. We've just had a friend visiting us for a week, and she was delighted to get out on her, on the electric bike that we've got. And she compared notes with Haringate, where she lives in the north of England. So we went up to SSU down the bike paths, you know, because somebody coming in as a visitor really doesn't want to try the roads or get caught up on the roads and things. So providing those sort of areas to, I think I put this list to be very specific on here. The big picture is how do we connect with the rest of the county? How do we have safe connections here? There is a lot of discussion in the county, Petaluma, and also Santa Rosa, Ronert Park, about having these connections in. A lot of the discussion also is that these plans can be shelved if they don't get into public works. So it takes work to actually, you know, public works has an awful lot of stuff that's going on, so to get them early in and so that they can, they can more or less be force-fed them, I guess. I don't know. But it's certainly a comment around the county that it's having a separate plan, both works, and the disadvantage is that it then takes time to actually get in to the plans there. I've itemized this, how do we, the potential connections to get to Stony Point in Qatadi? And I mean, I think that should be, the connections and what we want to achieve for the future should be the drivers. And there may be multiple ways of doing it. So I think this plan has come up with number six and number three as one way of doing it. I've proposed in past presentations that there is another way that might be sooner, but it does depend on, you know, getting it in on the plan. And then maybe, you know, we can have multiple plans here. Developers on the whole, from what I understand, you know, if it's early in the process, they're quite happy to make it happen. What's missing is the aspirational, the visionary side of things. So I think that's my best input to this process. Thank you very much for considering it, and...
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you. Jenny Blaker. I did submit an email, but I've got a few other different things to say as well. I really appreciate Qatadi's efforts to increase safety and connectivity for pedestrians and bicyclists over the years, and especially recently with all the new green paint. And just feels like there's a lot happening in that area. Thank you. I appreciated Commissioner Berman Shelley's comments about seniors and people with disabilities. And I was thinking, if we could make all the crossings safe for seniors, people with disabilities, and children, say, eight years old, then everybody would be safe and doing well. I also appreciate all the outreach with especially the interactive map, which I thought was fantastic, and the survey for public input. At the moment, that northwest section of Qatadi is really an obstacle for anyone trying to go on foot or by bike or any other way than a car, either through, across 101 or across 116. 116, you take your life in your hands trying to get across it. And I believe East Qatadi Avenue, sorry, not East, what is it called? West Qatadi Avenue is going to be changed anyway. So that would be a really essential place to have a safe crossing, meaning probably with a median, so that anyone going across slowly is safe getting across there. If there's new development out there, as at one point, senior housing was proposed, those seniors would really need to be able to walk safely, if they can, around the area. And yes, if there were families in that quadrant with children who could get to Thomas Page School on foot or by bike, it really needs to be a safe crossing. And I think having multiple, the word multiple, just, well, it won't happen if it's multiple. Caltrans won't want to do multiple crossings, but maybe choosing two or three specific ones and really pushing for them would be great. And thank you for the comments on the decomposed granite rather than asphalt. I think if everyone agrees that that looks better, but it also works better with roots and cracks, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's it. Thank you very much for your efforts and all the work.
My name is Ishant Aniga. As I stated earlier, I live over off of Sierra. So I wanted to say thank you for the improvements for the bicycle and the green paving that has been done. But I also like to walk along that way. And it's very difficult at times to walk, because if I want to go towards Stony Point area to take the path up, there's no crosswalk there. So a lot of times I have to run across the street. I'd like to see a crosswalk closer towards the 101 area. And then also, I drive up and down between here and St. Louis State where I work. I would like to hope, hopefully see one day. I come from LA, they have a Dart bus that just runs in the local area, like around USC area. I would like to see something like that, that just runs up and down East Qatadi. And that way I don't have to take my car, I can just take the bus. Thank you.
Do we have any comments online, Carla?
Yes, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. And Chair Savage, it looks like that'll end public comment.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I want to thank our visionary activists for Jenny and Neil. Yeah, I want to thank our visionary activists for Jenny Neal, and thank you for speaking. I didn't catch your name. For doing so much work on behalf of the city and residents and everybody, I am so grateful. Elderberry Bridge, I like that name, it just rings. And as what you said about being able to walk from your, from where you live to a safe place to cross, that's one of the places that we have seen as a place that needs to have a sidewalk. So that is being dealt with, I hope, soon. I have been speaking about being able to cross the street from that mobile home park to a safe sidewalk for years, for 20 years or something. So, yeah, thank you, thank you. And apparently the wheels of progress move slowly, especially when you keep hitting nails. So, good, let us move and let us fill in and make it possible to move about the county safely and just grateful. Thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners? All right, well, thank you very much. It's very informative, and I think having a well-executed plan, hopefully in the future, and something that's well-thought-out, you know, takes a lot of stabs at it, and it's just encouraging to continue to see the progress that's being made. So thank you, everyone, to be involved in this. All right, do we have any reports by staff?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Just briefly, as evidenced in tonight's agenda, we have a lot of work going on in the department right now, both long-range and current development projects. And so the next few months are likely to be fairly busy, and we're likely to have full agendas because of the upcoming holiday schedules. So just to kind of summarize some of the next meeting dates, the November 20th meeting will be canceled. It's the week of Thanksgiving, and typically people get a little frustrated when you ask them to come out and participate in a public meeting during that, and so we didn't have anything that was pressing on that agenda, and so we have proposed to cancel that. However, the December 4th meeting, we do anticipate to be a relatively large agenda and will likely include a new single-family residential project called Flahaven Estates down on Redwood Highway. It's the last parcel in Khatati on the west side of Old Redwood Highway. The next meeting for the commission would be December 18th. That meeting is also proposed to be canceled. That falls during the first day of the city's city hall closure, so we generally do not hold public meetings during that time. The December 4th meeting is on, and then the December 18th meeting is canceled. And then both of our scheduled Planning Commission meetings fall on holidays in January, first being New Year's Day, and the second meeting being Martin Luther King Day. And so we will be scheduling a special meeting for January 16th. Please check your calendars, that's the Tuesday following our typical Monday date. We don't have a schedule for that meeting date yet, but we wanted to throw it out there for the community to put on their calendars, and obviously for commissioners to check your availability. And then getting into February, the February 5th meeting is going to be on, and we will know that we'll be presenting the annual progress report, so identifying all the housing units we were able to build and approve in 2023. And then we will be canceling the 19th because that also falls on a holiday for President's Day. So just wanted to get those meetings kind of called out. Staff is proposing...
Noah, can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Since we're canceling meetings just because they're close to holidays, that in the future we consider June 19th a holiday? Something to consider, June 19th.
Sure. Yeah, so generally, the close to holiday is the November 20th. The week of Thanksgiving, we would definitely hold a meeting if we needed to, but thank you for that. And I know the council is looking at our holiday schedule, and Juneteenth may become a city-recognized holiday in the future, but that requires labor negotiations because that's in the MOU, so that is being discussed.
Just not hold public meetings during it?
Comment taken, and we'll work, we'll work to meet that goal. And then lastly, trying to help kind of the public and the commission understand what's likely to come, staff's going to put together an advanced agenda. It will absolutely be draft, and so please know that anything identified on that will be subject to change. But it's just the idea of being able to understand what's coming in the relatively near future with some conceptual dates identified, and we'll try to plan that out at least three months. And so it'll give the public an idea of projects that are likely to come to certain specific meetings, and then also commissioners to kind of see what's going on behind the scenes, because I understand it can be kind of opaque until you get your agenda just relatively shortly before a meeting date. That being said, we're also going to try to publish agendas earlier for our larger agendas. We were able to get this one out a few days early, and we'll endeavor to at least match that kind of Monday, Tuesday publication date a week before the meeting, essentially, when we have large agendas. And lastly, I want to introduce Eli Areola, our newest staff member in community development. He is helping out not only for Planning Commission meetings, but his title's planning technician, and he has been helping out with all elements of community development and has just been doing rockstar work. So we really appreciate having a full staff and everybody kind of coming together to help with all this important work.
Can I ask another question? About agendas being posted, when there's agendas about items that are near and dear physically to people's houses, do those get mailed to them or notified about them as well? How's that process?
That's a great question. So we actually made changes to the notification process relatively recently. So now we require for projects over one acre in size, or subdivisions over, I think, four units, we require a pre-application neighborhood meeting to be held. We'll generally send the notification to everyone within 500 feet of that property. Sometimes we expand that if it makes sense, just because of topography and size of parcels, sometimes it makes sense to go beyond 500. That same list of people will get the public hearing notice for projects when we come before the commission for the public hearing, and those larger projects will also require the onsite public hearing sign. So you might have seen those around town occasionally. The hotel is the most recent project that had one on it. It wasn't codified to require that onsite sign, but we would do it kind of on an ad hoc basis, and other cities in the county require them for certain sized development projects. So we go ahead, went ahead and codified it, so now it's a requirement for these larger projects to have a site, a sign onsite identifying what's proposed there, future meeting dates, all those things.
I have a question. I saw that there's still a for-lease sign over where the 707 convenience store was approved. Did that fall through?
Yes. So this is a good, this is a good element. As Mr. Hancock, you know, alluded to, sometimes the city approves projects and they don't move forward. And so I think the applicant had indicated he had kind of multiple irons in the fire at that time with regards to his business endeavors, and he chose to not move forward with the Khatati location. However, I just met with the owners of that site today, and another business owner is interested in moving in and taking over that use from it. So all the work that the commission did, and the owners got to, did to get that use permit in place, has actually helped them to be able to allow a different business, but the same type of business, but a different owner to move that location.
So that use permit would work for somebody who's altogether different and not have to come forward again?
Correct. And so that's a really, that's a really important thing for the commission to think about, is use permits, they go with the land. So you might have an operator in front of you, but that person could sell that business, they could move, and the owner could then lease it to somebody else, and as long as they're doing the same business, they're allowed to move in, and they're also subject to those same conditions that the commission puts on it to make sure that the impacts are minimized.
Okay, but this isn't on the agenda, so can we be discussing this?
I'm just giving you a brief summary from the department's perspective.
Well, and from my perspective, I wish I had indicated that that building, that is an eyesore, and that we should have required that something be done to the building in order to approve the use permit. And is that in my purview?
Something can be, with use permits specifically, we can address certain elements, and aesthetics can be part of it, but we are limited in what we can require.
Okay.
But that's a good point, and it's something to be thoughtful about as different use permits come forward. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, any reports by commission?
A comment. The new lights on the crosswalk out here, they're bright, and they're like right at your eye level, and I just thought when they first went in, I'm like, wow, they're really bright. What struck me last night, driving through that intersection, the glare on the street from those lights, I couldn't see the person that was going across the crosswalk. And so I don't know if it's, if there's, could be like a shield to get that light coming down more, but it was a dangerous situation. You know, it wasn't raining that much, but enough to have a lot of glare, and with cars and all those lights in those corners, it was really difficult to see the person in the crosswalk.
Thank you for letting me know. I'll bring it up to public works. All right, any items received after agenda was posted?
We had a few comments come in. Those were provided to the planning commissioners for their review prior to any of the items being presented.
All right, if there's nothing else, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second?
Carla, do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Moffett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jolardi?
Aye.
Chair Savage?
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good meeting.
So, so, you know, we're talking about the age of planning for the 2024, you know, we're going to start the city planning with the council in, um, probably February, March timeline. So if there's priorities on the commission standpoint that we should try to work with our, our work plan, or things that we prioritize at the city council, do you guys start to think about that? No?
Have there been any in, have there been any in recent years that the Planning Commission has put forward to the...